That's so it's me.
Supervisor, we're ready. Supervisor Chuck, we're ready.
Okay. We'll call this meeting to order. Thank you all for coming. Could you please join in the play?
Yes.
Pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic of the United States, one nation under God, indivisible, with whom we trust and serve. Councilman Granville is excused tonight. And we'll get started on our work session. At the top of the list is a donation for the shelves at our library storage project. Paula, would you like to come up and just tell us about? What's going on with that?
Supervisor Snyder and esteemed town board, the substantial investment that the town has made in the Aurora Town Public Library by constructing an amply sized storage shed demonstrates the worth that all of you place in the social infrastructure accessible for free to all members of our community with a library card. On behalf of our library board, friends group, staff and patrons, I thank you for facilitating the resolution of our storage struggles. Not having a dedicated onsite space for donated and discarded books to depend on was a drain on valuable time and resources. Fortunately, that problem is soon going to be in the past once shelving has been installed into the shed. Highway Superintendent David Gonder kindly offered to fabricate these shelves at no charge to the library. In order to make that happen, extra materials outside of the original bid must be must be purchased. Knowing that funding was not originally earmarked for shelving, the Friends of the Aurora Town Public Library would like to contribute the $721.92 quoted by Six to Lumber for the shelving supplies. A check has already been presented to our town supervisor to help complete the project. Please accept our sincere gratitude for your advocacy and thank you for your time.
We certainly do Paula, and we thank you very much for that. That's for sure. Um, I don't know if Dave's had any time in the near future, kind of hopefully get to that soon.
We'll be getting to it in the next couple of weeks.
Couple of weeks, I'm a little busy lately.
Yeah.
But we appreciate your donation, Paula, that's for sure. And
we're glad you were able to do it. Thank you.
Yep. Thank you very much. Any questions from the board?
No questions.
Good stuff.
Good stuff is right. Next on the agenda is the Route 240 solution. This is for the property down near the the library on Davis Road. Uh, we've kind of gone through this other times. Does anybody have any comments or discussion on that?
No. It's pretty clear, right? We've
All good?
All good.
Next on the agenda is the Bridge New York Grants. This is something you want to you want to give us a little bit of information on this, Dave?
Yeah, thanks Supervisor. Um, this isn't something that needs to be voted on. We submitted these grants last week. Um, I did send it to every board member, the applications that we put in. Uh, Bridge New York is at the last year of the five year program. And we're not sure if it's going to get refunded. Um, we're hopeful, but this could be it. So we figured as long as uh the money's still there, we'd take a look at all the bridges we had left. I just want to make it clear, there's neither of these three bridges are in imminent danger of collapse like we had on a couple of the others. So we applied for three grants, um, total of $5.2 million. I for Shear Road, Oakwood Avenue and Cornwall Road. The only thing I wanted to make sure the board was aware that the Bridge New York caps are 1.5 million per bridge. So the Oakwood project would be a very large project and at this time the estimate's coming in at 2.4 million. So I guess if we are successful at winning that, I just wanted to let the board know that there's a possibility that we may have to come up with funding for that bridge. Obviously after we've won it, we can mitigate a lot by doing the work ourselves. I'm not sure how much we would be able to on that project, only because it's such a major corridor for the village and how long we could shut it down. So I just wanted to caution, we wouldn't have to accept the grant if we won it, but I would think that it would be smart. If we, uh, even if we did have to bond the remainder. Um, so I just wanted to make sure the board knew what we were doing down at the highway department. Nothing needs to be done on this or acted on and hopefully just maybe we'll have some good news later in the year. But it was worth taking a shot at them.
What what are you thinking for a timeframe to actually do those bridges, Dave?
Well, I think as you saw, yeah, so as you saw with the two that we won, working with the DOT can be very difficult. It can be time consuming. The process, but they do have a two year deadline on them. So if you look at our estimates, they're based on inflationary pricing of 2026. So even if we won these, um, you know, it'd be a year or two later is when you would try to get them completed.
Do you think you does that? You think that'd be an issue at all, getting all three of them done in two years?
Well, it's a they're mostly going to be done by contractors. So the issues that you have. I'll just say the issues we've had on East Fillmore and Church are more to do with the electric wires that went across the whole village, go down through that corridor. So we wouldn't have those electric problems on this one. If we won the Cornwall one, that's a simple one because all the property around it's owned by Erie County and Emery Park. So it always comes down to the right of ways and the utilities that are the things that can tie them up. So the Cornwall one won't have any issues. Uh, Shear probably will have property issues like we had at church, you know, with uh, having to acquire property. Oakwood, that is a big one. So, but again, it just so you know, the Oakwood one, we were kind of surprised. The vintage of it is about 1973. And it's a culvert metal pipe, which has a 50 year lifespan, which is exactly where we're at. Uh, we were surprised to find when we did the hydraulics that the pipe is so undersized, it's only made for a 10 year flood. So like all the bridges we've done with the village, we've tried to expand them so that for future flooding. Uh, so it is pretty serious. Uh, the pipe is shot. Um, it's not imminent to collapse or anything, but if we don't win this grant, I suggest we keep applying until we do. Um, again, we'll find out from Albany if they're going to re-up the Bridge New York program. We're pretty confident we have a really good shot, at least for a couple of these, kind of dreaming to get all three. So I guess we'll find out. Uh, it's worth a shot though.
Oh, absolutely.
You know, cause anytime you can get the state to pay for a local bridge with the amount of taxpayers that pay in the state mitigates the cost to our residents. So.
Thanks, Dave. Any comments?
Uh, I presume if you win the grant, that would, as you said, help mitigate some upstream flooding there on that.
Yeah, that's correct, Joe.
Yeah. So it's not just about the uh, the lifespan of the bridge, but getting that water effectively out of the village and not having to get backed up on Main Street.
Yeah. And like I think you saw the grant applications, actually that's what's helped us win these grants with the help of our town historian and the providence that these to our advertisers provided us with. Each one of the bridges we've done, we've improved the hydraulic flow by about 50%. So we've expanded them a lot. Even the latest flood in 2022 on Main Street, the Mikey D's flood of Main Street, we believe is going to really help us to uh, move up the ladder for these bridges. So the bottom line tannery brook, it looks like a little dried up creek, but uh, it's very dangerous. It's caused a hundred years worth of damage in this community. So every single time we can hit one of these bridges, we need to try to upsize them to try to prevent this stuff for the future.
Thank you.
Any idea when you're gonna hear approval?
Yeah. So I think last time, Ray, they say that we should know in the fall, but I think the ones we won the last time, we didn't find out till almost December. So it'll be this year. Um, I'm actually on the Bridge New York Selection Committee for the Highway Association. So I might get a little insight a little earlier. Um, it's not a conflict, it's just part of the process. Um, so like I said, I don't think we might get none. I'm pretty confident we might get one or two of them. But you just never know. So we threw everything we had.
Thanks, Dave. Next on the agenda is the request to increase the dog kennel boarding fees. I don't know if you want to.
Yeah. So this is one I I've been talking with Martha and Liz for a couple of years here. Um, just this year twice, we've had dog watchers watching dogs for people that went out of the country. In one case, one out of the state in another case. And their dog service failed and they ended up in our town kennels. And what we've come to find out is we're so much cheaper than the kennel fees out there. They're both incidences. The people were like, well, forget it. We'll just leave you with the dog till we get back from France or South Carolina. So our fees are only 20 bucks a day. And when you consider that we have to come in and walk and take care of those dogs three, four times a day for their own health and safety at a three hour minimum per employee. We're not trying to make money off this, but at the end of the day, we should at least have this more in line for what what you should be paying for an overnight stay at the Easter out hotel. I so so we haven't raised this at least my 15 years, Martha. It's been a lot longer than that, right? I assume so. It's kind of just one of those things. We did hold the pickup fee still at 25, which personally I thought is too low too, but like Martha says, we're not here to try to make money. Um, but there's no question, dog control costs our community a lot of money, but it's an important service that helps take care of animals in the area.
And in my conversations with you, you're still pretty conservative on the on the kennel fee too.
I I think so. I think uh, generally the only people that have had long-term stays at the hotel are people like that that find it's cheaper to leave them with us. Usually they're only there for a day. I mean, the dog catchers are pretty good at getting people reunited and most people want their dog back right away. But again, if you're out of the country and it's half the price. So I think we just need to come up to the 2000s.
Any other comments?
I do have a puppy.
Don't you have a what?
We just got a puppy, so. Hook you up.
Okay. Next on the agenda for the work session is the um, upgrade for our payroll software. Has everybody had time to kind of study this? Uh, it's it's let me hit the highlights of it. We budgeted for this last year, uh, and we budgeted heavy thankfully because we weren't sure just what it was going to cost. But our Logix software is is gonna uh, no longer exist in around a year, next March, next March, I believe it is. Kathleen and Valerie dug into some other you know, companies that could get us some payroll software, UKG and Edmunds GovTech. And as you can see, and as you have read that uh, that Edmunds GovTech was purchased by Logix or purchased Logix, I should say. Which, to be honest with you, Kathleen said, really doesn't help a whole lot, but but a smidge. But the fees are most reasonable through Edmunds. And the reason we kind of have to decide this now is because to get the new program up and running by the time they get everybody in the entire town into it and so on and so forth. Uh, and we're not the only one that that Logix has that they no longer are gonna have the hardware to software to uh, to make that work with them. Kathleen said it could easily take nine months to get us up and running with that. So does anybody have any other questions or thoughts?
Dumped at his point.
Yeah.
I think uh, seems best to rely on those who use the software to sure make the determination of what we use, provided the the costs aren't exorbitant. In this, in this case, it also happens to be the least expensive option. So it makes it not all that hard of a decision, I don't think.
Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah, great, great.
Alright. Next is uh a request from Councilman McCann regarding Code Red to expand it to some senior center uh, status and also some some ZBA. Uh, do you want to tell us a little bit about what you have in mind on that, Joe?
Absolutely Supervisor. So uh, we use Code Red quite a bit during our recent Blizzard-like conditions uh, to do our best. I know Dave was giving me calls. I was also getting calls from Maureen with the Maureen with the village uh, and garbage, that seemed to be a huge issue. And it just seems to me that we could maybe utilize our push out opportunities a little bit better. Uh, this doesn't address garbage specifically, but uh, we did see some posts on social media with folks inquiring as to whether or not the senior center was open. That seems like it'd be a pretty, if we can get Donna up to speed, if she's comfortable with it, or if she can deputize somebody to take that uh, that job to just send out, you can target just those who use a senior center. Uh, that would wouldn't be any additional cost to the town. Um, the other thing I'd like to do, um, I thought anyway, would be a good idea is right now, obviously we're meeting the requirements in terms of notification on ZBA. You know, using the US mail. And I think also Martha, does it go in the advertiser as well, or is it just mail, those ZBA? Okay, so so we already have this product that can do this and it can geo-target the same way that the US mail can. So I don't know if we have to make it a policy of the town, but I I think that would be a very easy solution to just go that extra mile above and beyond what's minimum required to notify our residents if there should be a zoning variance required in their neighborhood. And in this case, if the senior center's closed for any reason on any particular day, so people aren't heading out in adverse weather or under any circumstances, wait and then find out the place is closed. I know it doesn't happen very often, but when it happens, it could be important.
Sure.
Gotcha. Well, you could also have like a water main situation or there could, there could be other instances where it could save somebody the trip. They could make different plans that day, knowing that the senior center was closed.
I had spoken to Donna previously about this and she was willing and thought it'd be a good idea to use it. Um, because not only does it text and email, but it also calls. So when they have something to to uh, that pops up, they, you know, she was she was kind of excited to use it. So I think that she would be on board with that. As far as the EBA and all of those announcements are concerned, um, we try to catch it since Joe and I were appointed as the Code Red Authorized Users. Um, but uh, you know, checking the website is probably not the best way to do it for planning board and ZBA. So it'd be good to get a system as to what 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 we want as a board to to be uh, announcing through this.
Yeah.
And then have a system so that we can do it. So we've used it a year now. We have to think about how we can how we can just get better at doing it. Um, there's there's certainly things that we can, you know, the garbage pickup was um, had received some complaints because the village and the town are, nobody understands what those are. And so you've got several different uh, the highway is 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 putting messages and so is the town page. So I think we just need to go back and review and say, alright, now that we've got a policy as to what we can't do, let's think about what we should be doing.
And but in in uh, you know, regarding the garbage, I mean, there was, there was some of our surrounding towns, actually four of them, who had driving bans. So picking up garbage, but they weren't going to just come to the town hall and pick up garbage.
Oh yeah, no, no. Yeah, that wasn't an issue with the company.
So to put it to put it out to more people. Where's the downside? There is none. But let me ask you this, what do you have in mind? Right, right now, it is a 500 feet from every corner, Martha. How, what is that distance? A budding, oh, just a budding property. Okay. So it's not a distance, not a set distance. Well, and how would we word that? And what do you, what you do you want to?
You can do a radius. You you put in the address that's like requesting the variance and you type in, you want 500 feet, you want 250 feet or whatever. And then it would would be a certain extent and comment on the person who's doing whatever his task with this to because there's a map that shows property lines and they would be able to visually see if it if they've covered all the abutting properties with that designation. So it could be a minimum distance and all the budding properties.
Right.
But we just have to get that policy.
So how do you want to, you want to get together uh, with the code committee? You want to get together and set up? Like, you want to type up?
I didn't think a crack at it.
You know, 500 feet, whatever.
Yeah. And then we can, I was thinking, I, you know, we already have a secretary to the ZBA, Cheryl Miller. I can certainly get her trained on uh, code or if you want to do it, Martha, whatever. Okay.
Yeah, if I'd like to talk to you about the
Absolutely. Yeah, that's not a problem. I can work on the uh, code and we can fix the time. I think I'm going to be at the highway on Friday. So if you're on on Friday, I can also make a stop over here.
Alright.
Sounds good.
So um, do you want to table this for now?
Yeah, yeah. I this was more discussion and then we can, I don't think it's gonna be that tough to come up with a policy for this.
Just get it in writing and then um.
Yeah. Sounds good. Thank you.
Next on the agenda is the B and B site applications. We have three of them here. They're they're for the B and Bs and uh, Rich, you want to give us a little bit of insight of what your thoughts are?
Okay. So our office recently did some searches on um, Airbnb websites to see if there were any listings in the town and we sent out notifications um, to those ones that we did find. And so far, the three that you have in front of you are ones that they are currently owner and operating out of. Uh, meeting the definition for bread and breakfast based on the uh, town code. So um, there are other notifications out there, more so in the village than um, in the town. Uh, but we are working through those right now.
Okay. And all three of these, we are, you're recommending we send to the planning board.
Correct. Uh, based on the language of the code, you have to, it has to go to um, chapter 95, which is site plan review for them to review. There is no modifications to the exterior or anything to the actual dwelling itself. It's just the parameters in regards to how it's written in the code.
Got you. Any questions?
I I think there'll be plenty once we talk to the planning board and it goes to that Doug.
Alright. Next is a request uh, from Liz Cassie, our code enforcement officer on on short-term rentals and BRBOs vacation rentals by owners.
Rich, yes, I think um, the intent is to um, look at revising the code with some newer language that uh, takes into account the possibilities and or if the town decides to go about the allowance to have someone have a um, a bread and breakfast or an Airbnb where they are or are not operating it out of, et cetera, in regards to some of the conditions that may or may not be um, happening in the current um, environment that we are, as more and more people are using this as a method of income for the properties that they have.
Okay. And Liz is requesting that we uh, reengage the the old code committee with the unofficial code committee. Uh, and I think that's a great idea. Any thoughts on that? And that code committee consisting of Luke and Liz and Doug Crowe, um, myself, Martha? Who am I missing?
Um, Paul Ernst.
And Paul Ernst. Yep. Yep. Sound like a good plan for everybody? Okay. We'll put that on the agenda and and uh, in the next day or three, I'll send out a mass email to to those people and we'll put some dates on it and find out what works for everybody. Sound good? Next is the uh, Major's Park Kiosk. This is, this is a request from the Open Space Committee. Um, I have to say that it's a very nice design, very well thought out, very detailed. It looks great. The town would, uh, they're asking for the town to cover the cost of the material of $649.79, 75 cents. It will be built by Bosse's, weather permitting. If if weather doesn't allow, it goes to the highway department to put the thing together. See that in the schedule there, Dave?
I think they're building it up in their place and then we bring it down.
They're gonna cut it in piece and and
Right.
mostly assemble it at school and then bring it down. That's what I get from the instructions.
Right. So the old kiosk up there was built by the Boy Scouts back about 15 years ago. Um, and it's kind of gone into disrepair. And this was uh, the plan that the Open Space Committee put together a year ago with the new parking lot up there. So this is just an extension to that whole thing. And then I believe, uh, Joe, you're involved in that. Trails are coming next and uh,
Yeah, we have, yeah, sorry. Yeah, we have the trails mapped out. You guys have done a great job improving that parking lot. It looks great. This kiosk will be another addition to that. We have the trail markers. Um, already produced from the Ormsby, not Ormsby, rather, the Blue Devil Design over at the high school. So I think we, I think it's been great getting the high school kids involved in this and obviously a highway's been great. So and we're not, you know, we're not chomping off more than we can chew here. $600 here, the the trail markers are 200 bucks. Your guys did the work with the highway. So you know, a little elbow grease and we're doing, we're making that park a little better bit by bit.
For $600, it's a real quality sign that John designed there.
It's very nice.
We've already removed the old kiosk in case you didn't know, um, to prepare for this. So uh, I just wanted to send the agenda, just so you're aware of what we're doing down there and make sure the board's okay with us putting the kiosk up on the park. That's all. I don't think it needed any kind of a board vote though, but if
Well, where are we getting the funds from, Dave?
I was just going to pay for it out of the Parks Department. That's all, unless you want to pay for it some other way. I I just wanted to make sure the board was okay with us installing a structure there. That's more what my concern was. But again, if you want to pay for it some other way.
No, if you've got it taking it out of parks is just.
Yeah, it's just the regular park supply line. That's kind of what my thought. It wasn't, that's not much money for what they're building there. It's the Taj Mahal of kiosks.
Alright. Any other questions or comments?
Right, good.
Thank you. Next is a request from Kathleen. This is uh, really just housekeeping. This money um, was taken from this line which the line didn't the money was taken from the ARPA funds, but it didn't get put on this line. It's just, it's just simply, the line looks like it's over budget, but it's really not. So it's just really a transfer of funds and uh, the vast majority of this monies were used for the pavement over at at the pool over on South Street there. Does anybody have any questions or thoughts or on that?
Uh, just to clarify, you and I spoke about this before and it's additional funds being spent, just accounting stuff.
Yeah, it's just, it's just an accounting line. We still have 81,000 and uh, whatever that number is there. Um, in our funds, $964 in our funds that that number has not changed. Got it. Okay. Next on the agenda is the West Falls Sculpture Sign. And uh, I see the reveres are here. Would you like to step up and tell us what you have in mind or Joe, would you like to start off with?
Oh no, Rico's the expert.
Okay.
David said that I could not come. So I guess I decided to come just to hear what was gonna happen, but not gonna speak.
Well, uh, we we have proposed a sign, uh, I think this time last year, uh, for West Falls. It's just a sculptural piece of artwork uh, to go in somewhere in town. So um, originally we had proposed to put it somewhere in near the depot. Uh, and then there was a right of way issue there. So uh, David and Luke had approached me about possibly putting it near the falls. And I said, that's fine. So I think David just needed a budget from me, so I delivered that to him uh, a few weeks ago and he came back and said that we were on the agenda. So um, we're we're donating the majority of the uh, paper and you know, some of the material for the project. So I think we're just looking for some help with some material cost. And David said there was a little bit of money left in the budget for that. So I think we're just looking for some help with some material cost and David said there was a little bit of money left in the budget for that. And that could be forwarded to us, so that'll help us acquire somebody materials to to get us started. So we realized it's going to take some time with the state road being done here over the course of the summer and or next year, who knows how long it's going to take. So we figured we could just start on it prefabricating it in our shop little by little and once the highway work is done, we could then go and install the sign wherever we deemed it was appropriate. So you guys have designs, right?
We do. We do have the designs and and truly, truly appreciate everything you're doing. That's for sure.
Thank you.
My only concern is I wish I knew where it was going and exactly how it was going to be located because quite frankly, that that area in front of the depot is is the old, it's, I mean, it's beat up blacktop. Are we gonna do something different in that area, babe?
Chuck, so this was what I talked to Councilman Wuchenski about. So first off, the the budget, because of the generous donation of Mr. Beeler, we have twenty-one hundred dollars in our West Falls Beautification Fund. So what my thought is similar to what we did with Visual Impacts last year, because we just don't have a lot of money in that fund was to use that as a deposit towards this. And then the first of the year of January twenty twenty-five, we would have our normal thousand dollars in there, so we could actually afford to pay for this over time. And then because of the DOT project, you're correct. I think we really need to see what ends up happening over there. I think this was a discussion we've been going on for two years now. It sounds like there's a lot of support from the West Falls community for this sign. It just comes down to we never had the money to invest because we just don't have money growing on trees. So this is the way we could at least move forward with it. But I don't think it's a great idea to leave it at the depot site. And my reasoning why, and I've explained this to Rico and to Luke, is currently, there's a New York State DOT sign at the corner of Old Glenwood and two forty that says West Falls. We've now installed another sign at the bottom of the hill that says West Falls. And I think it'd look overkill, three different signs in that quarter mile. So I think that it'd be more appropriate to think about when we redesign the dam site park to put it down there. But again, because we don't have the details from the DOT yet, how much that's going to impact us? I'm not sure exactly, but I suspect if you look at the right part of the parking lot, when we looked at this before, we probably turned in about one or two spaces into lawn and put it there. So that's kind of where I suspect if we did decide to put it somewhere, it would be to the right of the current dam site parking lot where currently there's a couple of blacktop pavement. We would have to redo all that. And then also too, we talked about lighting the dam site and I've reached out to Mr. Beeler and he's interested in that too. So I think it's just more looking at the long term of how we're gonna reinvent the park there. But do we want to put a down payment now to move forward or not?
That's I I'll be honest, and again, totally appreciate it, but I just wish I knew where it was gonna go because I I'm thinking that if this is close to the Veterans Park down there, I'm not sure that it's gonna look proportionate to the other items in the Veterans Park. This is this is big. You're an artist, you know. I'm gonna ask if we could wait a couple of weeks. Let's get together and just see where we think it's gonna be best to be placed. Is that?
Well, so, yeah, and I I think that first of all, we have to think about this differently than a sign, right? We originally that was our intent was to create a sign and then Rico went and made a work of art, right? So we're thinking of this as a sculpture rather than a sign, right? So beautification fund is good and this is a good use of the funds for that, but we we can't call it a sign. It's no longer a sign. It's a, you know, it's a sculpture, right? Or is that an accurate?
It's a work of art.
Yeah, yeah. So I I think with that in mind, the the one reason that I would want to put this on pause because we still don't know about the New York Forward Grant, which could change really all sorts of things, right? With that park down there, so I wouldn't want to set a specific, like I'm obviously for this, we've done had it working on it before.
Station or the entity wants to step forward, please, I don't want to. But it's it I don't on our end, just to preamble, and then you can tell us whatever you want. According to our esteemed highway superintendent, we're good on parking. The only variable will be weather. So under ideal circumstances, I think we estimate fifteen hundred spots. If we get snow and can't use some portion of thing, then there'll be less and that'll be incumbent on your organization to communicate to people that hey, we have all the parking here. No, we have a little bit less than we anticipated. That that will be beyond our abilities. But otherwise, I think we have general support. So anything you wanted to add to that would be swell.
He's not able to be here in December, so I just want to make sure everyone knew where I was. Yeah, we just wanted to make sure we we were closed on this, especially because we've started selling tickets and telling people that's where they're gonna park. And I I think weather will take care of itself.
Yeah.
I don't think we'll have fifteen hundred cars coming if it's snowing.
That's a good point. Not much of an eclipse in a snowstorm, I suppose. Yeah.
True. And we'll still have activities. We are planning a day of activities regardless of the weather. So we understand we live in Buffalo. And I can tell you, we've sold eight hundred tickets so far. The vast majority is in East Aurora, so there's the hope that people will get themselves there without needing parking. But we also have a good amount of Buffalo around the state, so.
Awesome.
Parking will be necessary, but I appreciate all your help.
I just want to let the board know I reached out to Erie County Highway, no problem on their end at all. The only thing though is I like the Borderlands Festival and we'll have to provide us with an insurance certificate and Jennifer could probably help you with that. That's not for us. That's for Erie County for the special permit for closing the road. So I make sure you knew that.
And so that's an addition to whatever the town needs in terms of insurance certificates?
I the town.
It's the same?
Okay, yeah, I know they'll need their own copy for Erie County, so.
I appreciate it.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Councilman.
You're welcome.
And we'll move on to the regular part of our meeting. We have no public hearing tonight, so could I have the approval of the minutes for the January eighth, twenty twenty-four meeting?
So moved.
Second. Second by motion by Ray, second by Joe. Any comments or discussion? All in favor? Aye. Opposed, motion carried. Next is an opportunity from anyone from the Otis to to address the board on items on this agenda. If anybody would like to step up to the mic, please give us your name and address.
Harrison Kelly, twenty forty Grover Road. Supervisor Snyder, Town Board. Regardless of tonight's outcome, I want to express my gratitude for the time spent by both the Town Board and the Planning Board in reviewing our zoning change petition. I appreciate your collective commitment and thoughtful discussions that reflect a dedication to our community's best interests. And of course, I hope for a favorable outcome, favorable vote and an opportunity to make a positive impact on the community. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Seeing no one, we'll move on to unfinished business. I'd like a motion to add D. The Eclipse Parking Agreement.
So moved.
Motion by Joe, can I have a second?
Second.
Second by Ray. Any comments or discussion? All in favor? Aye. Motion carried. First, we have the local law for the rezoning on five eighty-six and six hundred Olean Road. I'll just read a little bit of the legislative intent. This local law amends prior local law known as the Town of Aurora Code adopted by the Town of Aurora on January twenty-second, nineteen ninety as amended relating to the administrative, legislative, and general legislation of codes within the Town of Aurora as therein set forth. This local law will amend the boundaries of the zoning map to transfer the described properties at their present locations in A NRR zoning districts to C two zoning to accommodate the uses contained herein or its successors. Can I have a motion to adopt local law six dash two zero two three as written?
So moved.
Motion by Joe, can I have a second?
Second.
Second by Ray. Okay. Comments or discussion?
But it deserves comments here just to recap what it is that we had discussed over many meetings and that this is a decision on rezoning. It's not a decision on the specific project, so we're clear about that. And the board's decision is is somewhat not somewhat, but our decision needs to be based on certain things, including our comprehensive plan and the zoning characteristics surrounding the the lots in question. And so for for me personally, and I think based on the decision, the the comments of the board previously, this request is consistent with the comprehensive plan. It is consistent with the zoning surrounding the specific lot and and therefore I don't see any reason or grounds why not to adopt this law to change the lot to commercial. So that's that's my thinking. I don't know if we have any.
Thank you, Luke.
I'll echo what you said, Luke. I I went out to nap auto parts so for a broken wiper blade and that and when I think of heading out for auto parts, I think only on road and I think I need to rent tools. I think of only on road. At Masters over there, it's it's I think it's by and large a commercial area and I think it's a logical extension of our commercial zone for the Town of Aurora.
Well said. To add to that.
Sure. I took some time over the weekend and and today to take a look at the comprehensive plan that that was not adopted, but we still refer to it. And this is exactly what it says, efficiently plan for new commercial business in a manner that promotes new business but manages its growth and prevents sprawl. And I think that that's exactly what the rezone of this property does. So.
Great.
Any other just comments or discussion? Okay, this is a roll call vote.
Aye.
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 Aye. Motion approved. There's the first step.
Right, for anyone that does have concerns and for the landowner, I mean, it probably is not the best time to say this, but that was the easy step, actually, and especially use permit is quite a process moving forward. So
Absolutely, the real work now.
The real, yeah, which may be depressing, but that's.
Next on the agenda is the resolution for the state purchasing the the property down near the West Falls Library. Does anybody have any questions on this? We've kind of picked this up pretty good too. Any comments? Okay. Can I have a motion to adopt the rev- resolution for the advanced payment of a portion of land owned by the Town of Aurora? Let's see, how do we want to say this? At for the property at nineteen sixty-six Davis Road, as he picked it on the maps as we've previously seen. Can I have that motion?
So moved.
Motion by Luke, can I have a second?
Second.
Second by Ray. Comments or discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carried. And I just want to note that in the agenda, there's also a part two to that. But this motion has included that part. Is that correct, Martha? Okay. Next on the agenda is the payment to Floyd Elbert. This is for bridge work completed from ten twenty-eight twenty-three to ten twenty-nine twenty-three. This is on the Church Street Bridge. This is also paid through the grant. And I have a motion to approve that payment.
So moved.
Have a second?
Second.
Motion by Joe, second by Ray, comments or discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carried. Next on the agenda. Is also a payment to Floyd Albert for the work completed from April twenty ninth, twenty twenty three to September first, twenty twenty three. This is for the work at the East Fillmore Bridge. Can I have a motion to approve the payment of one thousand four hundred and eighty one dollars and twenty one cents as noted?
So moved.
Motion by Ray, second. Second by Luke. Any comments or discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion approved. Next on the agenda is a motion to approve the uh. Parking for the Eclipse. Councilman McCann, would you like to make that motion?
I would, thank you. So moved.
And I would like to second that.
Okay, any comments or discussion?
What what is the motion is?
No, the motion to approve the parking as as Joe noted before, which is uh, uh, we will approve the parking. Of however many cars we can, weather dependent.
Yeah, weather. Yeah, weather.
So motion was by Joe, second by Ray. Any other comments or discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion approved. Under new business. Can I have a motion to accept? A check for seven hundred and twenty one dollars and ninety two cents. Uh, from. The the library board, the friends group. And I got motion moved, motion by Ray.
Second.
Second by Joe, any comments or discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. And we have a request from Kathleen Moffett. This is a budget amendment for that same monies that were just donated to us. Can I have a motion to increase line A two seven zero five gifts and donations? By seven hundred and twenty one dollars and ninety two cents. And increase the appropriation line A sixteen twenty dot four two two buildings and grounds R and M. By seven hundred and twenty one dollars and ninety two cents.
So moved. Second.
Motion by Ray, second by Joe, any comments or discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Bless you. Um, opposed. Motion carried. Next, there was a request from Dave to increase the dog kennel fees. Can I have a motion to change the daily boarding fees in the town kennel? To forty dollars a day?
You wrote the local law.
Oh. Okay. Okay. Can I have a motion to authorize a local law to be written to increase the town kennel fee?
So moved.
Motion by Joe, second by Luke. Any comments or discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carried. Next on the agenda. Is the uh. New payroll software. Can I have a motion to authorize a supervisor to sign the sales order? Through Admin's GovTech, uh, as listed on this document.
So moved.
Motion by Ray, can I have a second?
Second.
Second by Luke. Any other comments or discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carried.
We should really re- review that uh, clips information.
Worth a shot.
Worth the shot, that's right.
Next on the agenda. Is a request from Kathleen Moffett. It's a budget amendment for that payroll right there. Can I have a motion to approve decreasing A? Line A five nine nine fund balance by thirteen thousand six hundred and fifty dollars and increase line A one six eight oh dot four zero one. Central data processing by thirteen thousand six hundred and fifty dollars.
So moved.
Motion by Ray, second by Joe, any comments or discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carried. Next was a code red. We're going to table this for the time being. Can I have a motion to to table um? Our discussion about code red until we get a few more details.
So moved.
Now, motion by Joe.
Second.
Second by Ray. Comments or discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carried. Next. Is a request from our building department. Can I have a motion to refer the applications for six eighty six Quaker Road? Thirteen oh nine Grover Road. And. One five one four Mill Road. To the planning board.
So moved.
Motion by Ray.
Second.
Second by Luke. Comments or discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carried. Next is another request from our building department. Can I have a motion to reengage the code committee? Uh, to discuss Airbnbs and and uh. VRBOs. Um, add a date to be determined.
So moved.
Motion by Ray.
Second.
Second by Joe, comments or discussion?
Glad to see you're getting the band back together.
Yeah. I don't think we ever officially disbanded, did we?
No, we really didn't. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carried. Next is a request for the kiosk at at Major's Park. Um. Can I have a motion to approve the construction of the kiosk as drawn? Um. The labor will be provided by the Ormsby Educational Center. And hopefully be set by the same. By Ormsby. Can I have that motion?
So moved.
Motion by Joe. Second by Ray. Comments or discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carried. Next is a request from Kathleen Moffett. This is a budget amendment as we discussed during the work session. Can I have a motion to increase revenue line A four zero eight nine federal aid other by fifty six thousand six dollars and nineteen sec- cents? And increase the appropriations line A seven one one zero dot five four five four park improvements ARPA only. By fifty six thousand six dollars and nineteen cents.
So moved.
Motion by Joe, second. Luke, second by Luke. Comments or discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carried. Next. Could I have a motion to table? The uh. West Falls Sculpture Sign uh, at this time?
So moved.
Motion by Ray.
Second.
Second by Joe. Comments or discussion?
The the funds, the funds come from the park budget and that that is controlled by Highway Superintendent Gunner, so they are earmarked if.
Yeah, that's what I had said, Supervisor Schneider, we don't have any plans with that funds. So they're available till the end of the year. So we have time.
It's a West Falls Beautification Fund, right? More specific than the Parks Fund.
Yeah, yes, yeah. So we have no plans for those funds.
Any other discussion?
No.
All in favor to table that?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. Next, we have. A few budget transfers. This is from Highway Superintendent Dave Gunner. Can I have a motion to approve the transfer of one thousand nine hundred and twenty five dollars from DB five one one two dot four one three? To line DB five one one zero dot four three three. Along with transferring six hundred dollars from line DB five one one zero dot four one three. To line DB five one one zero dot four three three. And three dollars and fifty eight cents. From line A five zero one zero dot four one six. To line A five zero one zero dot four. Can I have that motion?
Second.
Motion by Ray, second by Joe. Comments or discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carried. Next, we have a request from Chris. Uh. We'll let Megan come up and.
Jen.
And Jen, give us a little bit of.
So your agenda is proposing a uh, new theater program. It's similar to one that we ran a couple, well, years ago with a different instructor. Um, but she's looking at twelve weeks renting out the auditorium at Southside and.
It's not twelve weeks, it's like twelve days.
Twelve days, sorry. Twelve classes.
Be a long time.
A long theater program, um, but you if you want to talk about what you want to do.
Sure, so um, I have a son who's in the theater department at the high school. He's a junior. Um, and he and I wrote a little um, play that we thought would be kind of fun. That's called Viddler's Heist, and so it takes place. Right in town and the premise is that East Aurora Holland and Iroquois schools are having a competition for how to decorate Viddler's on the roof. Um, and but it's geared toward middle school kids being in it. You know, high school kids already have. Places to perform that type of thing and the middle schoolers don't so much, so just seemed like a good way to. Support the local theater programs and get some kids, you know, interested moving up.
Great. Awesome. Sounds good.
Yes, I think.
Very much.
More fun with the Department of Fun.
Can I have a motion to approve the? Winter theater program, winter theater camp program uh, as requested.
So moved.
Motion by Luke.
Second.
Second by Ray. Comments or discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All in favor of of the heist of Viddlers?
Aye. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. Under communications, we have the twenty twenty three annual report from the town clerk and the historian, along with the December twenty twenty three report from the building department. Next on the agenda is business from board members, and we'll start with Councilman McCann.
Hi, thank you very much. So I just want to uh, report, I have been promoted to the chair. Of the uh. Board of Managers for our sewer district, and it's one of those everyone else took a step back kind of promotions, so. But I'll take it on. It'll be fine, I'm sure. And the only thing I want, I see two of our ZBA members. Out there, I attended their last meeting and uh, I know they they miss Ray quite a bit, but challenging cases all, and you guys did a great job as always, so. And I couldn't be. Prouder of our ZBA board, quite frankly, you guys are. And and. Women are all fantastic, so. That's all I have.
Thank you, Joe. Luke?
Oh, nothing that I mean, we've got a lot of drafting going on here that we're gonna have to get taken care of, so a lot down the pipeline, um. But uh, but nothing specific to report. Tonight, um, I still haven't. Still haven't set a date for the skate park uh, discussion. It's difficult to get that group together, so we'll push that back. Um, and then the Climate Smart Community Task Force did not meet due to weather last week, so I'm going to try to fit in an additional meeting if we can, but um, but we didn't meet, so. Um, one thing for the board to consider is just that there is a. There is funding if we are to conduct a campaign to get houses signed up to switch to solar energy. Uh, for example, if we get ten houses to sign up, we get six thousand dollars, which I think we'd be able to do. Um, for the town, if we get twenty five, it goes up to twelve or something, so.
Not installing solar, correct?
That's not installing, it's switching your energy source because the the it's transmitted through NICIG, no matter what you do, you can choose who the supplier is. So if we work through the state, um, through a state. Approved contractor, um, and uh, and with NYSERDA, then this would be an easy way to uh, to to get access to those to those funds we could then use for. More clean energy and climate smart community initiatives, sort of the low hanging fruit in the beginning of the year to get some funds. So, so we're putting together different contractors that'll propose, um, and if anybody has any issues with the sort of concept. There's really no commitment other than we approve one of the contractors and then the Climate Smart Community Task Force will go out and try to get people to sign up. And if they're successful in getting at least ten.
Sure.
Then we get money.
Interesting.
Good.
Yeah, nothing significant at this point, still getting up to speed, but I did reach out to a former colleague of mine. He's on the Town Board for Newfane, and if you go to their website. Uh, you can see a lot of interesting things, specifically what caught my eye. Was in regards to electronic recycling. So he and I are going to get together at the end of this week and chat and try and get some ideas from him about that and other. Uh, things that uh, you know, we. Benny back and forth, so. Hopefully more on the horizon.
Okay. We do have a program for electronic recycling now, Ray, just so you know.
Oh, I know, I know.
Okay.
Yeah, absolutely. The that the reason for it is it seems to be a lot more expansive. So, you know.
Sure.
These things last two years on average. So if you figure we've got twelve thousand people in town, how many cell phones are disposed of annually? And that's just the tip of the iceberg.
Sure, okay. Thank you. I had the honor and the privilege of attending the uh, West Falls Firemen's Installation Dinner this past Saturday night, and it's. I think, I think this is the sixth year that I've gone and and every time I go, it just is incredible to listen to the. Stories and the and the awards given out for the dedication and the time that that these people put in as volunteers and. I just want to thank. Thank all the fire companies for for everything that they do, but that was it. It was a great evening. And next is a uh, is the audience too. It's it's an opportunity for uh. Anyone to address the town on any concerns or topics. Please limit your comments to three minutes if you could. Rod.
Thank you. Rod Simeon by Berry Court. Uh. There were several references tonight about the uh. Comprehensive plan, and I know here in this room. Several months ago, we it was uh. Announced that we have a grant approved, and I guess I'm asking you. Supervisor, i- is there a status report of that? Of that uh, project?
We should. Go ahead.
Status report is it's on my desk right now, the the RFP um, that we need to get out, so um, I am going through that and trying to finalize. Joe uh, provided it after searching around and uh. Found the town of Boston to have a really robust RFP, um, and I've just been working through it, trying to aurorize it, um. Or aurificate it uh, for our purposes. Once that's done, then we will. Put that out and proceed with the process.
Okay, good, uh. Related to that, uh, just uh. Recently completed an online Zoom training program uh, from the State Department. And one of the things they mentioned was. A specific program. Regarding comprehensive plans. And uh, I just announced to you. Supervisor and uh, Town Attorney. You guys have a lot of clout with the state. You could. Request of them. To have a specific training program just on that. Uh, here in East Aurora, and we could probably fill that training program with just. The members who are going to be involved in it and uh, certainly would be. I think a beneficial thing to consider prior to getting into that, it would give us a good. Grounding into what we're looking at. I I know a comprehensive plan is. Something you measure with a sundial, not a stopwatch, so it's going to be quite an undertaking. Something you measure with a sundial, not a stopwatch, so it's gonna be quite an undertaking.
You're talking about after the comprehensive plan is.
Okay, yeah, to to give.
Input.
You folks an idea of what's involved in. Writing and or amending one. So. Need any additional information, I'd be glad to discuss it with you, supervisor.
Great. Thank you, Rod. Anyone else? It will go to staff reports. Paul?
Why, I always learn a lot. There's there's always something you can learn from every one of those meetings, for sure.
Rod, you have anything else? Okay. Doug? Gotcha. Chief? Dave? Really, Rich? Hey, can I have a motion to approve the abstract?
So moved.
Motion by Joe, can I have a second? Second by Luke, any comments or discussion? All in favor? Opposed. Motion carried.
Hey Shane, can I bend your for a second as soon as we're done here?
Can I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Motion by Joe. Second by Luke, second by Ray. Any comments or discussion? All in favor? Motion carried.